April thirtieth, sorry. April thirtieth. So, um, I guess we can, uh, start discussion with, um, I think some, uh, lead in, Tom, or, um, uh, George, either, either one of you could lead in with your budget.
The school's finance committee, I believe, has concluded its work, its review. I had the chance, uh, Ruth and I to, to meet with the school administration yesterday and get a, kind of a sneak peek. I know Kate was feverishly putting papers together and, uh, I, I guess on her behalf, uh, we apologize that it wasn't done in advance, but there are materials here tonight. And I might suggest the best thing to do, because this really is a school-focused conversation, I think, is to spend time to understand what's been done to date. Um, uh, once that's concluded, I do have a piece that are put together that kind of takes all of that into account and gives us a sense of where we are. Uh, so I might suggest that be the best format. And, um... Everybody's asked to, uh, speak directly into the mic.
Well, I'm talking to everybody. Everybody at home doesn't need to know. But, right here, um, they s- asked that we speak directly into the mic.
Yep, uh, yeah, uh, Tom's got, uh, some, some packets of information that, uh, Kate Bolton has put together. Um, and if you want, we can, we can, uh, go through the first sheet of those when you, when they come around.
Great.
Give you a couple of seconds to pass those around.
While they get their copies, just so you're aware, I, the one piece that I did have yesterday and I passed on was detailed information on the base expenditure piece. Uh, I'm not sure if that's part of the packet, but that was sent out to council yesterday. There may still be questions about that, but, uh, they did have that piece in advance.
Yeah, I thought we would just, um, basically give you a quick walkthrough of the work that we've done to date. Uh, our process started, um, several months ago. Um, but the, the real meat of it was wrapped up on Monday, last Monday, where we went through the, um, investment program restorations. So, looking at the, the first sheet you have in front of you, that looks like this with the pink column and the blue column, uh, it's the Scarborough School Department Budget Proposals, FY twenty fifteen. The column on the left is, was the, uh, first reading that you guys have, uh, that was, that Tom had introduced to the council. Um, basically, the middle column is where we've made our, our adjustments in our review process. So, in, in base change expenditures, we, um, ferreted through several different line items and several different, several different, um, uh, changes that we've had since the first reading. And we've come up with a five hundred thousand, two hundred and three dollar reduction in, in that line. In the investments and program restorations, we looked at the original nine seventy one, seven fifty, and were able to reduce that by twenty-five percent based on, uh, some rather tough decision-making from the, uh, the finance committee with the help of the leadership team. So, that's a two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar reduction. In the adjustments to the operating budget, um, we were able to reduce that by a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four seventy-nine. And then, uh, we, I was pleased to see tonight, uh, we had a little bit of an adjustment in the debt service, which is, which is, uh, nice to see. That was a twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollar reduction. So, uh, from the original first reading budget proposal, we've seen a, a, uh, reduction, if you will, of eight hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Um, we've also seen a slight increase in the non-property tax revenues. Um, basically, what we looked at is the, the state GPA formula was reduced. We got a notification that was reduced, um, by an additional eighty-five thousand dollars plus, uh, close to eighty-six thousand dollars. We actually offset that on the finance side with, uh, some of the undesigned surplus revenue. So, we're ending up with a, a slight net adjustment on the property, non-property tax revenue side of things. So, we're looking at a, an in- an increase in non-property tax revenues of about fourteen thousand dollars. So, for a grand total, um, we are looking at, uh, the summary change in the tax request. So, it goes from, um, is a nine hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and six dollar reduction in our tax request. So, um, the, the information you have behind that is some of the details. I think you've seen the, the, um, was it the base, the base expenditure, uh, piece already? Um, so, this is more backing information for some of the details of what's on the first sheet. So, um, I guess the long and the short, what I'd like to, to end with is, is, uh, the process that we go through on the budget side, on the, on the school board's side, is, is quite involved. Um, what you see before you is not, uh, the first round, and it's certainly, there are a lot of things that ended up on the cutting floor, which you le- you won't see, and you, you, they don't, they're not displayed here. Um, but the process that we go through is very labor-intensive, it's very, um, complex, um, and it involves a lot of different people with a lot of expertise. So, we're hoping that in the, in the end, what you see before you is, uh, a true representation of what the schools need, uh, in our opinion, and we're hoping that, uh, with some explanation and answering some of your questions, you'll support us as we move forward. And what you see before you is what we're planning on presenting to the full school board at our meeting tomorrow for second reading and approval. So, what you see before you is not official, it's not our official proposal yet. Uh, it still needs to be approved by the full school board. What you see is just the recommendations of the school finance committee.
Chris, uh, in the materials that you had provided to us a few days ago, you identified the Anthem, uh, increase, uh, of five percent over fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, the first reading. And, I guess, the explanation, increase, first reading at nine point five. So, this was a go from nine point five to five percent because you had better data?
Right.
Correct.
We got the bill.
We got the, we got the bill from Anthem.
And that, and that resulted in a, um, a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two, two oh seven, two oh seven, one oh eight, I believe.
I know, and I'm looking at the materials that you had provided to us, uh, and it showed, uh, a change of two hundred and fifty thousand. So, my question was, am I just misreading this?
Which sheet? Uh, you're looking at the base expenditure versus the finance committee's?
It was the one that broke down, uh, in pretty good detail.
Mhm.
Where, what the sources of the changes were.
Yeah, I'm...
Kate probably understands what I'm...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the, the exact difference is here.
This is a mouth question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you got two fifty.
Uh, what we have was an original increase in our budget of four fifty-seven, seven twenty-four. If you're looking at that detail sheet.
Oh, so then...
And the new increase is two fifty.
The difference being...
So, if you take the four fifty-seven and subtract the two fifty, there you get the two oh...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And so, it's, it's just the coming and going piece.
Right. So, the actual, the actual increase is two fifty, but it's a two hundred and seventy dollar reduction versus what we had in the first, first seven thousand.
The, the oth- the other, um, item, that's a large item.
Mhm.
In that, uh, is the estimated effective change in teacher insurance coverage of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Can you just give us a sense of what, what that's... The, the second page of the handout that was given to us?
Yeah, the second, the second.
And so, you're looking at the, you're looking at the blue, about middle of the, of that table.
Yeah, I was just looking for, to understand the big ones.
No, she, yeah, no.
(laughing).
Man, don't say anything, no.
(laughing). You, you can kind of grab it, pull it down.
I feel terribly important. Um, so, you were looking at, uh, the, uh, change in the health insurance. What that represents is that in our new bargaining, bargaining agreement with the teachers' union, there's a provision in that that says that if your spouse is eligible for insurance coverage elsewhere, that we're going to expect that spouse to go and take that insurance and not be covered on ours. Uh, this is something that the, the school board negotiating committee worked out with the teachers' union and, um, with the idea of trying to reduce some of the burden of, of those benefit costs for us. What that number represents, the one seventy-five, seven oh four, is an estimate of what we think the savings might be in this first year. We don't know, because we haven't gone through the process yet, what we're actually going to receive savings. But, based on the number of people who have their spouses currently covered, the percentage of those that we guess might be able to move them off somewhere else, uh, and then taking a, a sort of a, a conservative estimate as to what those savings might be.
Kate, while you're here, the, uh, reduced work, I'm, I'm looking at the other large item, the reduced workman comp per updated projection from Clark. We probably don't understand what that means.
Um, we usually base our workers' comp estimate as to what it's going to cost us on, uh, well, work comp is, is actually calculated on your payroll. And, uh, I think Tom spoke to this recently, your, your mod rate, which is your experience, the experience that the insurance company has had with you, um, over the prior several years, and they, they blend those, those figures. Um, we were looking at a guess as to where we thought our increase would be, based on our payroll and based on our experience. And in consultation with Clark Insurance, which is our, our brokers, we were able to sort of bring that down a little bit. They, they essentially told me that they thought that I had a little too much in there, that they didn't think it was going to go up that much. So, we changed it by a percentage point and, and brought it down.
And I, I, really what I was trying to figure out was, are we talking about cuts? Or are we talking about just better understanding of what the numbers are as they were originally presented?
I'd say, yeah.
That's why I sort of looked at those three, because each one reflects a better understanding of what the numbers are. They're not really cuts.
No, absolutely.
Okay.
What, what they are are refinements made as the data changes.
Exactly.
And the information comes to us.
Okay.
And, and I know we've all spoken to the fact that it's difficult to make those estimates.
Totally.
Without the data in hand and that the, it's an ever-changing picture for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, now...
Yeah, I've got, I've got one question, uh, your, the last line in the blue is refined natural gas projections. I'm trying to...
On, on which sheet, counselor?
The same sheet.
Okay, yep, sorry.
I had noticed in the original budget, and I can't find it now, that there were significant increases in natural gas.
Um, we have a new, uh, contract under negotiation for natural gas this year, and the, the prices have been so volatile, we've been getting a lot of recommendations. Again, we use a broker, we use a, um, energy service that advises us on, as, how best to settle those prices and, and helps us create those contracts. But, the natural gas market has been so wacky that, um, we have been trying to, to estimate conservatively. Um, interestingly, we are hoping to save significantly in natural gas at the Wentworth School because of the new geothermal system. Uh, but that's offset with some increases in electricity, which it takes to power the system. So, we're, we're not really sure where that's going to land us right now. But, we do think that natural gas, it's definitely gone up since we had our lock-in rate, and, and we do think that's going to be a big jump for us. In fact, it's one of the things that we described as a, a key factor, um, increasing our base expenditures in this base expenditure piece, it's that whole energy and utilities bit.
And I, I believe, Kate, we can only do one-year contracts on natural gas, right? We can't do extended contracts?
I don't believe we can at this point, because the, the, the people who are selling us the gas are just as confused as we are. They really don't want to lock themselves in, because they don't know what's going to happen any more than we do. It's a, it's such, it's a global market.
It's really not an issue of negotiation, in, in my opinion. Uh, you're at the mercy of the market, frankly. Uh, it's really understanding when to, when to buy in the market, but when that price is, and doing your best to understand where it's likely to go in the future. So, I know the school subscribes to the theory of locking it in typically for a year, uh, but there's great uncertainty, certainly in natural gas right now.
Well, then you can't call it a lock-in.
Pardon?
It's not a locked-in price.
Uh, I don't believe they've locked in yet. I think that's part of the question, they're waiting.
I thought you said it was, you had a lock-in price.
We will lock in price, but we don't have it now. We're on a locked-in price now, but we, we're, uh, going to have to have a new contract. We don't know where that new contract will end up.
Okay, thank you. Does the municipal side, do we use natural gas, just the school?
No, we do, this building uses natural gas.
Are we under the same contract?
Um, in the past two years, I have followed on the coattails. Todd Jepson, the, uh, facilities director, uh, knows far more about those commodities than I do. So, we collaborate, but I tend to follow his lead. Uh, they're buying, uh, much greater volumes than we are, um, and I typically follow his lead. When I say that, it's really when we jump in and lock it in.
But, is it the same contract?
Uh, we have a different contract, it's, it's typically with the same supplier, though.
Why do we have a different contract?
Uh, I believe that's the way they prefer it. Um, I guess I could look into that further. Uh, it really depends on the volumes that you're, you're purchasing, but I, I can explore that further. Neither the school nor the council have locked in yet this year, for next year.
Thank you.
I, I was looking at the, and making the adjustments based on the changes in blue, that the level services budget, uh, it looks like, uh, it's about a million dollar increase for, uh, salaries and benefits.
I'm sorry, which sheet are you on, counselor?
I was just, the, the blue, the blue and the salaries and benefits on the materials you sent us the other day. And, because I was trying to figure out what, what's the magnitude of the impact of keeping things as they are. And it looked to me like it was, uh, I guess seventy-five percent of, it's a thirty-two million dollar budget. Level services, um, the base expenditure portion, uh...
Salaries and benefits.
Yeah.
Do form seventy-six percent of what...
And they form seventy-six percent, so...
And the thirty-two million represents just the people.
Because it, it, it looked to me like it was a four to five percent increase, which I was thinking, struck me as, uh, you have contracts, but it's a, it's a relatively unsustainable trajectory if, because the que- the question I would ask is, should the town expect that they would receive the same year in and year out increases in salaries and benefits?
Well, I, I think that's why we're trying to do some of the structural changes that we've taken on. For example, the, the sodium perch, it's relooking at how we do that, a million dollars, that's right there. Um, and, uh, that, uh, has an opportunity, um, that if pursued, uh, begins personal and controls some, uh, costs. Same with, uh, what Kate just, um, uh, addressed in terms of the change in the contract, in the teacher's contract, which is our biggest contract, and really making some adjustments about eligibility for benefits, um, and moving in that direction of, of controlling the, the cost there. There, there are efforts underway.
Yeah, I...
And I, I think if you look at the, at the, the backup information, that, that number is a culmination of several different contracts. That's the whole, that's the raw number.
Right.
Or the overall number. Um, it's further broken down a little bit on the, um, base expenditure sheet that you got. You can see the, in that green section at the top. You can see where, um, where we start to make some progress with some of the newer contracts, but there are still some contracts out there that we're obliged to, to stay with, so...
Yeah, I was wondering on the insurance piece, do you, when, when you have Anthem come along, is that a competitive bid, or is that just a sole source?
Yeah, that's...
Anthem, Anthem is a, is a thorn in our side.
Yeah.
We, actually, we, we love Anthem, but, but we have trouble with is that we are participating in what's called the MEA Benefits Trust, which is a, a purchasing group for insurance for teachers throughout the state of Maine. It's a huge organization, and it has a lot of bargaining power. So, the group rates that we get, um, have been very competitive, and the, the type of coverage that we get has been excellent. Um, the difficulty is that there is, um, no free market, uh, because Anthem and the MEA Benefits Trust have controlled all of their loss data, and it hasn't been possible for an individual school district to go out with that information to get a bid, to find out whether they could do better, uh, with another carrier. Also, other carriers, until very recently, have been reluctant to come into Maine and look to that market just for that reason. Um, one other thing that's sort of a millstone is that, um, I hope no one thinks I'm calling them personally a millstone, but we have retired teachers who are linked to the group. So, we have a, a large group of retirees who are still covered under that group plan, and, um, their loss ratios are a little bit higher because they're in an older group. And, um, so, that tends to make us a less, uh, attractive group for your typical insurance company to want to come in and insure demographically. Um, all of that leads us to wanting to go out and get some bids and get some competition, but the competition just isn't really there yet because of the structure of the system.
So, there's probably a lot of towns that join with Scarborough and the MEA?
Virtually every school district in the state.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, you know, to their credit, that does give them bargaining...
But, does that mean everybody has the same benefits package? Deductibles, copays?
Yes, essentially.
The same prices they're offering.
Same offers.
Yeah.
Same offers.
Right.
Depends on what each board chooses to choose. There are other, there are other school districts that offer ninety-five percent, and the employee's only paying five percent.
Yeah.
So, we're at a, you know, a...
When, when you, when you make a, a, an agreement with Anthem, do you have the ability, under your contractual obligations, to say, "Let's up the deductible"?
We don't really have that opportunity. We don't have the opportunity to craft the plan. Um, Anthem has introduced two new higher deductible plans, which we've been able to, to put out on the table to our teachers just this year, which is great, and hopefully, that will shift everybody to a little bit, an opportunity for a lower premium. Um, but we don't have the power to craft our own policy, our own coverage package. When we buy in with the MEA, we have the opportunity, as, as Christine said, to say to our various bargaining units, "Well, we'll pay eighty percent of your coverage, and we'll pay fifty percent of your coverage," or whatever. But, the plans themselves are, are created by the Benefits Trust.
And I, and it's, that, that in private industry, uh, if it's a, and it was nine point five percent, if you've got a whopper like that, the immediate reaction is you'd share it with, the, the employer would pay for a portion of it. Uh, and so, the, the benefit package would change, the shared responsibility would change, so as to allow the world to keep going on. I didn't, that's what I'm sort of...
Yeah, unlike private industry, some of the things were, they're not as, we're not as nimble. There are contractual obligations that sometimes run for years or longer. Uh, the health trust has been notoriously slow to embrace some of these, uh, what are becoming more and more popular, the higher deductible plans, but I'm pleased that they are making advances, I think, this year.
Yeah, this year, there are two new higher deductible plans. But even, their version of a higher deductible plan is thousands of dollars.
Seven dot.
Ten thousand, you know, it's, it's really, it's very conservative.
Right.
Um, but, eh, what a, a number of districts are hoping will happen is, as Anthem opens up and begins to understand what it is that we're looking for as consumers, um, that they will continue to create those plans. Uh, the alternative is for us to go out and try to bid with very little information and bringing our retiree group with us, as Scarborough's individual group, which tends to kind of skew, um, that, those group rates. And it, it doesn't make us a very exciting prospect for another insurer.
But, we do pick the plan offered that we'll pay eighty percent off.
Correct.
And if, if the employee wants to buy up, they have to pay a hundred percent of that buy-up.
Okay.
So, we do have a little control.
Yeah.
Not a lot of control.
Thank you, thank you.
So, these increases, the five percent, is the employer's share. There's an equal five percent being shared by the employee, if you will. They're, they're sharing a...
But, they're twenty percent.
Right.
Well, it's, it, I don't think a percent goes to twenty, but the money out of their...
No, it's eighty, it's eighty-twenty, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You pay eighty, the employee pays twenty.
Right.
Exactly.
So, they have to pay five percent more of their twenty percent share.
Right.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question on this, uh, is the detailed base expenditure sheet? With the, the, the bottom line in green, the carry forward for new positions counted in FY fourteen column, section B.
Another mouth question. Um, for that one, I'll, I'll just ask that you take a look here at this big long sheet, and, um, in the first column on the big long sheet, which is the current budget, the FY fourteen budget that we're, we're living in today, we've got a section that says investments and program restoration, which in our new budget, we've been talking about the, you know, various proposals and the, and the positions and so forth. In FY fourteen, that budget proposal included two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars in new... And so, on this chart, the two ninety-two, five hundred sits in investments and program restoration. And then, in the FY fifteen level services budget, you'll see that line goes to zero, because those folks aren't investments anymore. They're with us, they're part of our level services. So, the, uh, carry forward of the new positions moves up to the base expenditure.
So, once you've added them last year, then you're, you got them.
That's exactly right.
You don't hire them for a year, you...
Right.
Right, correct.
So, now they're added on and become part of this year's.
Correct. So, rather than carry across two ninety-two, five hundred, sort of artificially in new proposals, I'm putting the two ninety-two, five hundred up into the base expenditures, because those are P C, those are...
So, am I just, I just want to make sure I understand this right. So, in this pink column on the large sheet that you're lo- you're talking about, finance committee's latest, the seven thirty-six, seven fifty? Those are two hires, son?
Those are outlined in the investments and restoration sheet here. Um, there, it amounts at this point to ten point five nine M C P, which is ten point five nine new... Um, and then there are a couple of things that aren't to deal with, but they're all...
Is this, is this the sheet that came out in the news today? Because I don't have it. It's wasn't in mine.
Yeah, I didn't have any...
He doesn't have one.
Uh, oh, yeah, I just, there it is. I just didn't unfold it. I was looking for a lot...
The last page is folded up, um, but...
Yeah.
Was this in my message?
I might have had a collating issue.
No, no, it was...
Oh, no, I found it, it's G Marie.
I can make it look the same size, but that's a... It's a pretty package.
So, so in fact, you're saying as part of the FY fifteen budget, there's ten and a half new positions?
Correct.
So, Kate, so last year, uh, the carry forward on new positions, i- is that about the number that you experienced last year?
The, the two ninety-two, five hundred?
Yeah.
It's exactly the new money that we got last year for people.
Yeah. So, but they would have gotten a raise or something, wouldn't they?
Well, but that's, that's not part of the base expenditures, that's just moving them back up in here. It's, it's a, sort of an accounting problem to figure out where the two ninety-two, five hundred belongs. You could just say, when you're looking at that FY twenty-fourteen column, that the two ninety-two, five hundred just belongs up in that salary, because they're here already.
Yes.
Um, it's just a way of showing that that portion of the salaries and benefits was a new piece last year. a new piece of last year. So, really, if you, if you, if you wanted to be a little cleaner about it, you could take the two ninety-two five hundred in the FY fourteen column, roll it up into thirty, thirty million and you would have the same picture.
Okay.
On the new positions, is there any particular theme or are you able, what are you achieving by this revised request?
I think, as you look across the phases, take two, it's a, our focus across the earlier grades in English Language Arts and adjustments there in our curriculum and our efforts. A jump start is basically the investment of getting kids ready. It's a summer program, it's a small investment, pays big dividends. Writing and core instruction carries through Wentworth and, and so, you see English Language Arts. Wentworth has been a big investment for the community in terms of the structure itself and the technology that's in there. There's a technology integrator then included so that we're making good use of the resources that have been invested in. There's a rebuilding of world language, as you can see, and basically trying to do some rebuilding in some critical areas that were cut years back, physical education, critical to kids' health and art and music, which was trimmed. I think we, you see that same theme carrying into the high school with art and music. The guidance counselor, just because we have case loads for our guidance counselors that really almost prohibit counseling because they're so large. Athletics is really a, a safety issue related to the athletic trainer that you see with concussion and basically the level of intense labor that's involved in ensuring safety and , and running the programs that we have. Special services, you just see some, and it's on the back, just flip the sheet, it's right on the back. These are mandated student services. You find, are you finding them?
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
We're there and we'll check.
I've had a long day today.
Okay. So, now you're, so now you're on the back and it's under special services and when you say, when we look at point four or point two, we're talking about just additional capacity that we're adding. Those are not full-time positions, they're pieces of positions that are required in order to meet the mandates for the students that we receive. And someone had asked about the population. The population continues to change, both in terms of not necessarily shrinking and, and the students that we are receiving do have more and more complicated needs that require more services. The DW is actually district-wide, the professional growth and evaluation piece, although shrunk down by half, really supports our new teacher evaluation system. Technology investment, and again, that's across the district with an application specialist. We have made investments in previous years into software programs and, and basically learning supports that are, that are technically related that we've not been able to take the full advantage of. That's the reason for that position. Student health and safety, again, the complexity of students continues to increase around health and as well, the concussion changes in terms of what we know about concussions and follow-up in school and so on, really drives a lot of that nursing need. We're inadequately staffed at this point. The long-term subcompensation was an effort to just increase compensation so that we could be, do a better job at attracting subs and you see that came out. And the quick curriculum quality assurance is really our quality assurance effort to ensure that we have, we're giving teachers the materials and the support that they're needed and part of those supports are a coaching model that we use, which is, research has demonstrated to be the most effective way to really improve practice, which basically improves student learning. That's just a quick look at those things. I'd have to answer any questions that you might have about any specific one.
I have one. The mandated student services, are those mandates from the federal or the state?
Federal government.
Which one, you were talking about positions, what is it? Campus safety ed tech?
That's, that is specifically a campus monitor for the high school.
The.
Safety purposes.
So, not, you wouldn't, how does that differ from like the responsibilities of the high school resource officer? Like, what, what's the different duties?
The resource officer, I believe, provides security. I think they're, they're as a, as an instructional type of person. The, this ed tech person is, because of the, the building is, basically it's monitored, but there's a lot of entryways, there's a lot of hallways. The administration or the, the administration at the high school felt that there's a need to have somebody available, available other than a teacher, to be able, an intermittent teacher, to be able to patrol those areas, make sure kids are where they are, to make sure that there's, the high school itself is secured and people aren't.
It's currently being done by teachers who don't have a class going on at that time.
Right, on a, on a revolving kind of basis, there's not a, a person dedicated just for that. So, that.
That's part of their duties, right? So-called duties of teachers.
The head of the teacher.
Because they haven't been a teacher, like you get study hall duty, you get hall duty, you get bathroom duty, you get, it's all really fun things when you're a teacher, but.
Yeah, at the high school, I think it's a little bit different in terms of what their responsibilities are versus like an elementary type of situation. But, the way it was presented to, to the Finance Committee was this is a definite need in terms of safety of the campus and ensuring that, that adequate protocols are in place.
The, just for every, every one of these items, there is a, there's a, a very descriptive proposal that looks at the need for the, for the position or if it's a, if it is a position or the need for the investment, what we anticipate to be the benefits of that, of making that investment, looking at lower cost alternatives, if there are some. And, and those are all available and if you would like a copy of, for example, that one, we can provide that to you.
Yeah.
I think the package is following them, so I can just email that to Tom.
Yes, sure.
It's kind of one of my file cases.
Yeah, one of, one of the things we look at at Finance is, you know, the list you see in front of you is obviously not everything that's come, that, that, it's the, it's the apex of the pyramid, if you will. There's a lot of things behind this that didn't make it through this process. We sat down and evaluated for each one of these line items, there is a sheet behind it that the local building leadership teams put together. Part of that criteria is which goal does it, does it address? Is it a, you know, is it a critical need? What's the critical ranking? Does it, what are the costs of not implementing it? Are there low-cost alternatives? So, wherever possible, what you see is if there were low-cost alternatives that we were able to identify, we've been able to flesh some of those out. What's left for full-time FTEs really are the, the local administrators and leadership teams and senior leadership teams' opinions of, these are the critical things that we must have moving forward. So, so it's not like we got fourteen, the fourteen FTEs were not the beginning. That was, that was probably three quarters of the way through the process. So, then when we looked at those fourteen FTEs, again, we recycle that process through again with a, running through a critical checklist, you know, always cycling through the priorities and eventually what flushes out is what you see in front of you.
So, if I understand correctly, you started with the original proposed budget, my proposed budget, with just over fourteen FTEs and through your Finance Committee review, you're now down to ten point five nine.
Right.
Five of which are at that full-time employees.
One, two, three, four, five, yes, that is correct. That is correct.
There has been, just safety-wise, following up on Jessica's question, I think it's important to know that we have embarked as a, both a town and, and school organization and created a health, safety and security advisory team. We have, we have a number of folks from the town in responsible and leadership positions as well as from the school, working together in the areas of emergency preparedness, response and training, looking at school, safety, climate and culture, looking as well at facilities and technology as it relates to ensuring safety and health and wellness. And that's been a, that's been a great vehicle for having important discussions and conversations about needs and I, I believe that that particular monitor is consistent, the request for that monitor is consistent with the look at the high school and the emergency preparedness and response capacity that we've got.
Tom, did you say that the, the number is ten point five FTEs? Did I hear that right?
It's the number, it's the number that tracks on the, on the investment.
It flips over to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's the number that tracks to the right.
Okay. So, what is essentially being proposed with this amended budget is add ten and a half new full-time people?
No.
No, 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 not.
Ten point five FTEs is a full-time equivalent.
It is a full-time equivalent.
So, it's actually fifteen or twenty people, but there, there are portions of.
Five definite full-timers.
Right, I'm just saying it's a ten and a half FTEs.
Full-time equivalent, that's correct.
Right, right.
Are we, are we teaching more kids? Is, is, is that, I mean.
We reduced, most of those are restorations.
But, they're, but we're not actu, we haven't actually expanded the scope of, of the kids who, that we have to educate.
Well, I think if you look at through, if you look at individually, like at the middle school, for example, the one, that we're reinstating a full-time language teacher to, to, that's going to directly impact the kids. That's something that's absolutely necessary to, to get the program even, not even back to where it was before, but to start that progress. That's, that's been identified as a critical need in the group. You look at the PE teacher, it's a point five position. So, basically what that means is there are, I believe there are, is it two?
One and a half.
One and a half, so one person in ed tech now trying to cover the whole curriculum. We make that halftime person a full-time person now, so now we have two people covering that. So, we're not hiring an additional person, even though that, that's part of the FTE equivalent. So, I think to Tom's point, we definitely have five new positions that we're going to have to go out and get new bodies to fill.
Right.
And the other positions are going to be increases of people's capacity, if, if you will. So, it's not, it's not like adding ten brand-new full-time positions, it's bringing half of them up to the full-time level.
They're fractional.
Yes, it's fractional.
Right.
At this point.
Where's, where's the money coming from? I mean, you're increasing five people, but you're increasing three quarters of a million dollars. I mean, if somebody is already working and doing part of a job and you're going to ask the person to do another part of the job, why do your salaries go up?
Because they're equally being paid for part of the work that they're doing.
I don't quite understand that question.
The working has time. We were teaching more kids by increasing world languages and PE and arts.
Or their part-time.
We're taking kids out of study halls, providing them with PE, arts, art classes and world language, so they are not sitting in study halls.
Yeah.
And that's what has happened through the cuts that we had over the years, more kids are sitting in study halls, so we're trying to give them the classes that, that they need.
There are currently some kids, from what I understood, there's currently some kids at the middle school who do not receive music or PE or art.
There's no art of these.
Along their time there because it's just, there's just not anybody to teach it. So, they sit in a study hall instead.
And, and to your point, Counselor Blais, the, if there's a point five FTE person, it doesn't mean that that person's spending their full-time there and only getting paid half-salary. If they're half-time, they're half-time, they're only spending a certain amount of time there. So, we're not, we're not asking, we're not giving somebody who's there for eight hours doubling their pay. We're asking them to work additional time, so we have to pay them the additional money.
So, they're like a part-time employee?
Correct.
Now, they're being brought up to full-time.
Correct.
To do more.
Yep.
Servicing twice as many kids.
Right, right.
Now, one question I had to ground rule, what, what was the increase in enrollment for last year?
Overall or?
Can't project, yeah.
Increase, increases has been fairly static.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think, I just looked at the number, one, I mean, three, three thousand one fifty-one, so we, we hover around between thirty-one, thirty-one hundred plus kids. At this point, it's thirty-one fifty-two or something like that.
But, I'd like to.
That's a pretty, yes.
But, I'd like to, I, I would like to point out though, bear in mind, and we keep coming back to this fact over and over again because it is pertinent to the discussion. We lost, when we lost the positions of, in two thousand and ten, the student population didn't change then either. So, we've been running with a deficit of, of people and this attempt right here is, it really was, from the, from the Finance Committee standpoint, it was more teaching aspects of it. We tried to cut more of the, the secondary people out that we could and we really wanted to keep in, in, in the spirit of direct contact with the kids, with the, the art, the music, the PE, that kind of stuff. There are mandates in there that we have to have, especially on the special services side, there isn't much we can do with that. That's where we're obligated to, to cover that stuff. So, so to your, to your, I, I think to your point, Mrs. Sullivan, it's not that, it's not that we've got an increased number of students and we need more people to cover what we at. Our base level right now is, is insufficient, basically.
Now, here's, here's another question for you. We, we spoke about this when we had our meeting amongst each other in the manager's conference room. A lot of people, you know, like to know, from the school, when we get, when are we going to get to a point where the, okay, we're saying that the students have leveled off, when are these large increases going to level off? Do you have a, an answer to that?
To me, I, I think you have to put it in the perspective of where you're starting from and where you're coming from, where you want to be. The, you know.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Right. And I think, you know, personally, I, I would love to see us get to a, a level where we're at least investing the, the average per pupil costs on, across the state, whatever the state is. We're certainly not there yet. That's, in my mind, that's a long-term goal. We have a very clear defined need with the positions that were lost in two thousand and ten. We're still trying to recover from those. So, and it's, it's, as we discussed, it's not necessarily a position for position we lost in our teacher, we're putting our teacher back in. But, at some point, we need to bring those levels back up because what we're seeing, certainly at the, at the upper grades, at the high schools and at the, at the middle school levels, is we don't have sufficient capacity in order to get the kids the programs that they want and the programs that they need. So, because of that, we're trying desperately as a, as a Finance Committee to keep the adjustments slow and incremental as much as we possibly can. Nobody wants to see giant increases up and down in cycles like that. We've seen that in the past, it's not effective. So, we're really looking at trying to maintain that slow and steady progression to get back to that base level where we can be, where we can be, what's it going to take? Three, five, seven years? I don't, it depends on what comes out of this room and what goes, what the voters will approve.
Right. Well, I, that's a good way of putting it, the base level for the amount of students that you have and a lot of taxpayers want to know, when are we going to be there so we don't see these big increases? Certainly trying to control it as best we can on the municipal side.
I, I think the theme.
We're going to do the same thing. You know, we, we're behind it, but we're, we're trying to get it so that people are, you know, can somewhat comfortable with the taxes. It's a very hard job to do. So, the municipal side's all behind, but I think in some cases, when it comes to education or, you know, municipal needs, sometimes education is going to take the forefront. But, like I said, a lot, a lot of the taxpayers want to know, when are we going to be caught up? We don't see these continued, you know, large, you know, increases with taxes.
I, I think, Richard, the, it's been, it's been interesting for me to see the themes because this is basically a, kind of a zero-based game that we were playing here in terms of looking at student needs. It's, it was one point six million dollars that was identified.
It's, it was one point six million dollars that was identified. It basically came into the first reading at nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, it's now down to seven hundred and something thousand. But the themes that keep playing out are, are really around building adequate programs that unfortunately had the foundation. The foundation was allowed to crumble beneath them. For example, building a strong foreign language, um, program, I'll just use that as one example. You know, I grew up in a, in a farm community and basically, um, in my junior high, had more access to foreign language learning than our current, our kids currently do in our middle school. That's just not okay today. So when, when are we going to be done with foreign language? Well, when we have an adequate and appropriate, um, foreign language program, that the state is saying that in order to grant a proficiency-based diploma to kids, they have to be fluent in a second language. Well, no kid's going to get fluent in a second language, given where we start, because we start them too late and we basically don't have an adequate program to get them there. What is that going to look like? It's, it's an investment for another couple of years, because we, last year, I think we tried to increase two or three positions. We ended up maybe with a half or, so it's, it's a, it's a slow level of progress. We are making progress and I think for that, we're appreciative. At some point, with a static population, you will, you will get the program in place that's needed. But clearly, what was decimated was foreign language, um, the arts, music, um, PE. And, and we also need to keep pace as well in terms of the support for technology. The community has invested, for example, in the Wentworth School, um, and that's terrific. And we've, we've, we've got to make sure that we're making the best use of the tools that have been put in that school. So I think it is a restoration, it is a rebuilding, and I don't think that it's going to continue on that trajectory that we're, you know, that we're humming the same theme every year. If we keep building and we do some, some incremental building, um, it, it, it will level off.
Yeah, I, I also would like to interject and, and just remind us all that as devastating as, as the reduction, uh, from the state is to the town, the reduction to the school department has been enormous. And, and it hasn't ceased. And with just the bills that have passed this year, for example, we get, what, ten percent, ten cents on the dollar?
Yes.
Thirteen.
So if, if we send one child to a virtual school, one child, we have to pay ninety percent of that tuition, state pays ten percent. So then on top of that, we have to pay the transportation cost, if it's to Baxter School, for example. That hits us not only in Scarborough, but the state is putting in money for every one of those students. And that's going to reduce the total GPA for the students we currently have. So that's going to be another reduction that we are going to be experiences, experiencing as we move forward. And there is nothing we can do about it. The preschool bill passed. That means that two years, I think it's, I think in two years, Scarborough's going to have to provide education for four-year-olds. So that's already in the works. We already have two bills, uh, that passed this year, one on suicide prevention in the schools that we've had to already start training for. The entire staff needs to be trained on suicide prevention. State's not paying any of that.
Including all the way down to a bus driver and a, and a caring worker, every, every day.
All employees. So, you know, it is scary to sit here and talk about a school budget of level funding when it is impossible to level fund the budget. And I was here in two ten when we had to reduce all of those positions. And I commend you, I commend this town and this Board of Education and the administration for trying to bring us back to where we were. And just because it cost a hundred dollars in two ten is now probably going to cost us a, that same hundred is going to cost us a hundred and fifty dollars in, in two fourteen fifty, so, you know, not only are we trying to play catch-up again, it's going to cost us more.
Well, and, and we're stuck on the town council side because of the tax shift that's occurred.
Of course.
From Augusta onto the town.
Absolutely.
So we're dealing with taxpayers whom I have met and we hear from and email daily that they can't afford to pay any more property tax. It's really killing them to pay these property taxes and when you add on, you know, the circuit breaker got changed and, you know, on and on and on and on. But that being said, so at this point, as the people, all of us are, well, most of us at the table who were elected by the people of this town of Scarborough, we need to be working really hard to find that balance. And yes, we can't, there are all sorts of things we need to be doing in the school department that would make sense. And there are things in the school department, most important thing is, I've said over and over again, for school to do is to educate children, to get them ready, so that they can be successful upon graduation, no matter what it is they, they, they want to do. So it's also incumbent upon the school department to be looking at their budget. And I think, I know this is where I was coming from, I understand that there are unfunded mandates. I definitely support, you know, programs that are directly related to academics. But I really, really want the school department to be looking at administrative costs, overhead, anything that's not directly related to that child and that teacher in the classroom. And I hear that from my constituents.
You, you do realize we have the lowest per pupil administrative cost of any district in the state.
I, I think it's really important to, to, to bring things into perspective here, too. You know, the, the bottom line is this, there, there are two separate independent boards, right? There's the council, there's an independent school board that we're, are, we're tasked with developing an education that's, that's adequate and appropriate and meets federal and state guidelines, okay? There's one factor that we keep, we seem to be forgetting here, and that's ultimately, we, sitting at this table, do not decide this budget. The, the people of Scarborough decide this budget. So, you know, we, we all put a lot of energy and effort and, 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 uh, heart and soul into the process that we do, or we wouldn't be sitting here. But I think it really behooves us at some point to, to say, you know what? We've, we, we're coming at it from, we've, we've got everything that we think we've gotten out of this, this is where we think, think we need to be. Now let's let the people of Scarborough decide, let's let the citizens decide. And, and I, I think that's, that's where I struggle with is, is how much, how, how, how much, um, how much input do, do you all as a council really want to put into this process? And I'm not saying that, I mean, we've, we've heard everything you've said from the very beginning, from the baseline, no tax increases, that does register with us. We hear that, we respect that. And we, we take those things into account when we go through this process. But at some point, we do have to be looking at it from the different aspects of it. You have to hold the line on the, on the tax burden and increases, that's your primary focus. Our primary focus is the base education of the children. They can be aligned and they should be aligned. And I think ultimately, the sweet spot or finding the right alignment for that is up to the townsfolk. And, and once we've done our process and we've, we've had our discussions and our, and our exchanges back and forth and, and we've worked together and, and what we put out there, it's not going to be perfect for everybody, it, it never is. There are going to be people who, who like parts of it and who don't like parts of it. And there are going to be people who will support it and people who will oppose it. That's why we have the public vote for it. Because if it wasn't for the public vote, we would be able to sit around this table, have the negotiations, come forward with a budget, and then we would all deal with the consequences of that.
Good job.
Sorry.
I, I just, I had one thing, we were talking about the unfunded mandates. Um, and that's one thing that I've been, I mean, I've been on it for quite a while now, I'm sick and tired of it, honestly. If they want, if they want stuff to pay for, stop shifting it onto the local taxes. And we're going to, we're, um, we're going to try working on that, that try to get some resolve from that, because it is getting ridiculous. And, um, the one thing with the preschool, that's going to, is, that's going to be another unfunded mandate?
Shaping up that way.
I was told, we were told personally by Senator Miller that it was not going to be. And I knew all along it was going to be. And this is the problem that we have with Augusta. Well, it's one thing, and they do something else, and this is, and it costs us time and time again.
Richard, they'll pay for, they'll pay the per pupil cost for the education. But it's in our, you know, in our subsidy. But they're not, they will not pay for any expansion of facilities and we don't have the facilities to accommodate it right at the present time.
My understanding, uh, of the pre-K program was that the first year they were going to pay a portion, the next year they're going to pay less of the portion, and the third year, you're on your own. Now, whether or not that changed in the end, I don't know, but that was the way it was originally presented.
When you said that they paid for the, per student cost for four-year-olds, did you mean at our rate?
At our rate.
So we get ten cents, so, so it's a ninety percent unfunded mandate?
Correct.
I mean, and I didn't, I mean, if, because I, I hear what you say about that we have an inordinate amount of time where kids are sitting in study halls in our schools. Uh, uh, but when I look at funding four-year-olds versus going to art class or PE, I got to tell you where I come out. I mean, that, that's a no-brainer. Every educator knows that you got to educate them from zero to five before you get them in the school system. So that, that, to me, and now it scares the Jesus out of me to think that this is coming right down the road.
Yes, it is.
And, and so when I look at this, I'm now looking at it with darker glasses. I mean, that's the only way you can look at it, because now you, what you're doing is you're signing up for all this. And then, but right over the horizon in legislation that's been adopted is a huge unfunded mandate.
But Counselor, Counselor Donovan, if I could, we, that doesn't alleviate us from our responsibilities that we have this year.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's law, it's common, and, and it's part of the discussion.
And it's an election year.
I, I think, I, I think all these discussions become certainly a lot easier and maybe even go away if, if the, if the state agrees to do what they legally are obligated to do, and that's fund fifty-five percent of the educational costs in the state. They are not doing that, they're not being accountable to that, and we're all, as local taxpayers, paying for that.
There was mention made of the chart that we had seen previously, could we have that updated? I know the last time we talked about it, it was, it didn't have the most recent year in it.
Oh, the per pupil expenditure?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Could we have that?
I don't think we have the data from the state yet.
Well, I don't need the data from the state, because I know that the state average is an average, and so it's not going to go like this or like this. But it would show me where we really are in comparison to a state average that's a year behind.
We, we could give you a, um, it, it wouldn't be a full picture, because we haven't finished two thousand and fourteen yet. We're only finished the third quarter of the year. So those expenses are the expenses that you've actually had during the fiscal year.
You still have to get May and June in, right?
I'm not quite there yet.
So you got ten months out of twelve, you have a pretty good idea where you are.
We could give you where we are today, and we could give you the.
Well, I would, I think, I think you could probably give me what you think the two thousand and fourteen average per pupil, yeah.
I'll make a stab at it, we'll see how close I get.
I just think that would be helpful.
Can we put a wager on it? If you're right, then we get it?
Being new, I don't know, did we ever, did we ever peak in our enrollment, or are we still going up? Did we have a peak period?
There was, I think there was a, there was an extended period of some very heavy growth, that, that level off. So, so there was a leveling off of growth. And I think we've maintained at about thirty-two hundred, around that thirty-two hundred part. And, but we've seen actually, um, we've seen increases, and you also have more development happening.
That's right, yeah.
So you can probably anticipate.
That's on the horizon.
Yes, it is.
Most other dis- many, many other districts in Maine, just because of the demographics of Maine, are decreasing in population. Scarborough and other of these towns are, um, either maintaining or increasing, like Scarborough, not big jumps, but it's, it is steadily adding more kids, um, because of the in-migration. People find these coastal communities desirable.
I just wanted to talk about, um, the difficulty we have as school board members, is we're elected and voted locally, but our responsibility is from the state. That's where our authority comes from. And we are absolutely empathetic and cognizant of the tax burden. We all pay the taxes of this town, so every time we put a new proposal on, it's our tax bill, too. But we have the distinct responsibility to keep the kids who are in the school right now in mind. We can't worry and say, well, we're not going to give them gym, because we can't afford it. We have to give them gym. Kids who, in two thousand and ten were in fourth grade, are now about to be freshmen in high school. Sometimes they have foreign language, sometimes they don't. They're, have been in study halls if they're not in band, all the way through middle school. They're not getting arts, and these are, they don't get do-overs, this is it. They get twelve years in the schools, and now the last four years, they have had a subpar education. And, you know, it's not Jackie's fault. They have had a subpar education in Scarborough, and we're trying to incrementally rebuild it in the face of getting the state's burdens being shifted to us locally, in the face of increased, um, needs of how you educate students. So our population may be stagnant, we may have lost thirty kids, but we may have gotten thirty kids with special needs, who cost significantly more to educate. Scarborough does a really good job at that. We are really popular with families with kids with special needs, for good reason. I would do the same thing, I would go where I knew my kid was going to get the best services. Scarborough does a really excellent job with special service kids. We're, it's, but we can't deny the kids who are in school right now. We can't say to them, better luck next year, maybe when you're a freshman, you'll get all the things you're supposed to have. They don't get another chance. So it's, we're in a very incredibly difficult position, because we are not blind and deaf to the economy, we know. But we're legally and morally obligated to provide an adequate education for the kids who are already in the schools. So when are the big increases going to end? I don't know. When is Anthem going to stop giving us ten percent increases every year? We don't know, but we still have to pay those bills and educate the kids we have. So it's, I, I don't know how we get out of it, because we're not adding fluff to these budgets. It's incredibly difficult to come up with a budget and look at it and say, well, still not good enough, but we're never going to even get this much. So it's, it's incredibly frustrating every single year.
We, we have thirty-two kids, thirty-two hundred, or approximately thirty-two hundred kids showing up every day. They have to be transported, they have to be fed, they have to be educated, they have to, their safety has to be taken into account, and all of the additional mandates of training and requirements and things that go with that, too. So it's, it's, you know, there are, there are a lot of challenges with it. I, I think, um, I'll say in the year and a half that I've been here, the communication and the interaction with the council has been greatly improved. I, I think this is a very good, positive start. And I think, um, it's dialogues like this that help us. At the end of the day, it's our town, it's not our municipal and our school, it's our town.
It's our town.
And we've got to decide collectively as leaders of the community, the best way we can do that for everybody. And, and the only way we do that is collaboratively, and I think it's working. I think we just need to, we need to really get comfortable with each other and, and gain a little more trust with each other that we're doing, we all have the best interest of the town, and have these kind of dialogues. Because, you know, I, you know, it's, it's, it's challenging for me to sit here and, and, and hear things out in the public of, we were told one thing and we did something completely different. You know, we, we, we did hear it, um, we, we understand it, you know, we're, we, we can empathize with it as taxpayers. But we also, as to Kelly's point, we do have to approach it from an understanding of what our roles and responsibilities are. And that's why, working with you guys, we find out the best compromise for the town and then let them decide. That, that's ultimately what our goal, I see our role as framing out it, framing it out, getting as much. out, getting as much of it in place as we can, and then let the people decide. And, you know, they may come back and say, "No, we don't like this," but they've spoken. And then we can react to, "Okay, then what do, where do we go from here?" You know?
When we sat on Monday, it- it was painful to go through these positions here, these, bring these down from the ten and a half to, uh, to the ten and a half. I mean, we look at each one of these and they're so justifiable. When you, when you talk to the principals and you understand what the issues are in those classrooms, and in creating schedules that has, that has kids in classes that are productively working, not sitting in study halls. But I think over time, you know, um, particularly, uh, you know, I've lived in town here for thir- almost thirty-five years. And what I've seen is, even in good times, even when things were great in the nineties, it was still time to cut back. And so, we took away, we took away, we took away, we took away, and kept it down, and that's why Scarborough ends up being, you know, the lowest taxpayers in the whole coastline here, York to Brunswick. And what it means is some kids in our families, the oldest child may get to take a foreign language, makes it into the second year when he's in high school, ends the, the fourth year of high school being able to speak pretty well in language, and- and it looks great for colleges. The next child comes along, doesn't have the same opportunity because it's, take it, take it away, give it a little, take it away, give it away. It, it never comes to a place where it levels off in terms of staffing our schools fully so that all the courses are provided for the kids. You know, I've been in seven school systems in- in three New England states, most of them here in the state of Maine. I see kids in these rural schools, they're taking foreign languages in kindergarten, they're speaking foreign languages by the time they reach sixth grade. It's amazing. They have the technology, they have, you know, what they need to really be productive in terms of, um, technology for- for later on in their, in their future careers or as they head off to college. We don't have it here. I'm like, I'm amazed. I'm, I'm just, I can't believe that a town with this many people, you know, educated people who believe in- in education, and yet still we're not even, you- you want, I know you want the- the school system to reach a level where, when have you had enough, when are we going to level off? Not until we get back what, what we needed to begin with. It's, it's constant, you know, back and forth, and so we never reached that place where it, where it works out leveling off. But, you know, I'm hopeful that that, that is where we can get to, but.
And- and to us, it's also, I mean, I- I'm, I- I try and take as much of the rhetoric and emotion out of it as possible and try and stick to the facts and figures, and we've asked for a lot of data on the, on the school board side of performance. And it's, it's pretty clear, you can track performance with funding. It's not a one-to-one correlation, and the year you cut isn't where you're impacted. But you can see performances through test-taking, through graduation rates, through any number of different variables. You can follow the, it's a sine curve, and the sine curve is offset by a year or two where the funding impacts the performance. And the goal, we talked about long-term goals, we want to flatten that curve out. We, you know, we'd like to see a nice, slow, steady grad, love to be able to do COLA and stay chugging away at where we're at and have a, have a great system, you know? And- and none of us at, at, in the council are, at the, at the, at the school board are advocating for being the highest spending per person. Nobody wants that because it doesn't equate to a higher education. But when you look at student-teacher ratios, the USA News, uh, report that was out, we're the top ten high school in, in Maine. That's, that's, that's nice, it's nice to hear. You start looking at the meat of that survey, it's, we have the highest, the highest student-teacher ratio in all of Commonwealth County. Only two people in the state have a higher per te- according to that, that, that survey, have a higher student-teacher, uh, teach, uh, student to teacher ratio. We have a fifteen to one, state average is twelve to one. Our graduation rates were thir- are, are, our, I think it was college readiness rate, they determined was thirty-two point nine percent. The other ones were fifty, fifty-eight, Falmouth Cape, the people we still compare ourselves to. So, you know, I'm not saying that that, I don't know the background of the study, but, you know, the, the, the news flash and the buzzword is Scarborough's the top ten high school in the state of Maine. Yes, we are. That's fantastic, that's a testament to what our teachers do with the limited resources and the, and the, and the effect that they have on education. But when you look at deeper into it, the gap between number ten and even number five is huge. And that's really what we're trying to, that's really what our, our, we're trying to accomplish, is ge- just getting us, you know, I- I've never met a person who says, "I really, I'm struggling, I'm just, I'm going to happy to be the last, I want to be ten out of ten when I start something." I- I mean, I don't, I don't, I know nobody in our town wants that, but how do we get to number five? We don't do it all at once, we don't do it all with large jumps and massive increases. We've got to, to, to systemically slowly make structural changes that we talk about and move that, just to keep moving towards that goal. And we need your help to do that. Because it, it, and ultimately, the real question, as you guys are weighing, is where's the benefi- where's the real benefit? Is the benefit here or is it here? And as, again, I think that, I think the challenge to us is to say, we, we put our best effort forward and we let the town decide where it wants to go. And then we deal with the consequences of it. If the budget doesn't pass, we go back to work and we start sharpening our pencils and we look at other things. You know? Because I, 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 it's very difficult to quantify what you don't hear, and people tend, when they have issues and challenges, they speak up, and rightfully so, and they should, and they have every right to do that. And it, it's, it's good feedback. Rarely, and I, I'll, I'll ask you guys, do you rare, do you get emails that say, "Hey, you guys are doing a great job, you know, I really support you guys, you know, I saw that meeting yesterday, it was awesome, you guys handled that really well." I don't get, I don't get emails like that. I mean, it, yeah, well, I, you know? But the, but as soon as, as soon as somebody has an issue, even if it's taking something out of context, you get flooded with a lot of requests for information and, and clarification, if you will. And that's, that's good, we're here for that, that's, those are positive things. But we've just, I think we've got to work collectively to get to that, to get to that middle ground somewhere. So, we need your help to do that because ultimately, you guys do have the authority to say, you know, "It's this much." And then we, as a, as a board, have to decide, can we support that? Can we, can we work with that or can't we?
So, like we discussed, uh, when we had a meeting, um, next year, we'll try and do things differently and meet earlier.
Yep.
Yeah.
Try something else.
Better timing.
Yes.
Well, at least we're talking.
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
Guess we could do that much tonight, but.
She's saving the best for last, I know it.
So, um, I guess, does anybody have any questions on the council, you know? Is any of the school board having any?
Good discussion.
Anyone else?
I, I just want, just one, one point, I'll, I'll make it brief. Um, it's great to hear these, um, school advocates, uh, uh, strong voices and, you know, their, your community members. I'm just the guy hired to, uh, to try to make things work better. The thing that we do know, um, as Chris said, where we've had deficits, we can track student performance going up and down. The good news is, where over these last couple of years we have made investments, small though they may be, we are also seeing corresponding growth and positive gains. So, I, I think the community should be confident that, um, the investments that we are making, the restorations that we are focused on are the right ones, and they're having a positive impact on, on our kids. And I think that that would speak to the reason why we have suddenly got into the limelight and we are in number ten, um, in terms of our high schools. So, I, I think that should be, um, some confidence building for you all and for the community to know that.
And it, it is, it's just a, as a council, it's a tough spot to be in between, you know, um, the public that, um, that's not getting raises, that people aren't feeling much, they've got raises for years, um, that say it's a small business, that's seeing reductions in what they make. So, I mean, it's, it's, the hard times aren't over yet, and people still feel that. So, we, we, you know, when the, of course, when, you know, you're doing the best you can and making investments in children's education, you see the bill for that, the public sees the bill for that, they're like, "Whoa, wait a minute." But, um, you got, you know, you're all doing what you think's best for the town and children, and you're their ab- advocate. We're kind of on the other end, but we're, we're kind of the advocate for both, uh, parents and taxes. So, it's a tough place to be in and it gets frustrating, and, you know, from time to time, we vent those, and, uh, what happens, you know? Um, it, it gets frustrating, um, so, um, I hope that everyone understands that. So, with that, um, Tom, you might have some-
I thought it might be helpful just to kind of give the council and the school board, and certainly all over the home, appreciation for where we stand. Now, obviously, none of this has been voted on, but considering the school finance committee has completed its review and ready to make a mediation with the school board Thursday night, uh-
Tomorrow night.
Tonight. Um, and the town finances concluded its work, um, which I do have a sense and an expectation that those, um, will come forward in the second reading and will likely pass. And so, I've done some forecasts, modeling if you will, to understand what the effect of these changes are. Uh, in total, the net changes or reductions to the budget passed in first reading is one million sixty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars, and that's a combined effort between the town and schools. Uh, that breakdown is as follows, a hundred and fifty-seven, nine fifty-one of that is on the town, on the town side, nine hundred nine thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars is on the school side. Again, complying for just over a million dollar reduction. The effect of that on the, the tax rate, uh, puts the tax rate increase at four point seven seven percent. Uh, we started, our first reading is at six point seven three, so there's, uh, nearly a two percent improvement in that respect. Uh, so, uh, what I intend to do is, once the school board has taken action tomorrow night, we'll, I assume, it'll be similar to how exactly what was discussed tonight, we will prepare two sets of motions. One will capture the town finance committee's recommendations, the other will simply, uh, probably grab a dollar amount since the council doesn't consider itself a line item detail on the school side. Uh, and those will be prepared, distributed in advance of the meeting for next Wednesday, page seven. I would strongly urge any counselor who intends to offer further amendments, just from past experience, that meeting can be confusing. And so, the more advanced work we do, and myself and Ruth are available to assist any counselor in preparing a motion, because it's really vitally important to have that well-thought-out, uh, and presented properly. Uh, frankly, I think it's essential to succeed, so, um, I don't think anyone wants any surprises that night. So, uh, I put that out there, any counselor who needs assistance in, in developing the motion, I'm sure it needs to help.
Hey, uh, I guess with that, over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you very much.
Good meeting with you.